Good evening, welcome to tonight's work session. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board members come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the audience of citizens' logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board. The board president may ask an individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. Thank you for coming out to tonight's work session. It's a specially scheduled work session to discuss the status of the AC projects at Gwinnor, Knapp, and Oak Park Elementary Schools. A few comments that I would like to make before we get started. There has been no decision made on how to proceed with the bids at all. Tonight's work session is specifically meant so that we would get input from the community on how to, what their ideas are on how to proceed. We are going to allow or have public comment at the beginning of the meeting as usual, but I suspect some people will want to make comments after the presentation as well. So, we're going to have public comment after the presentation too. And in the interest of having as many people heard as possible, we were respectfully asked that you keep your comments short to like two minutes if possible or less. And if you, you know, think of something that you want to say and you didn't, you know, after the meeting's over, I'd just like to remind everybody that our emails and our phone numbers are on these agendas, so you can contact us tomorrow or Wednesday. And then on Thursday, there's another specially scheduled work session meeting at 6:30 before the regularly scheduled action meeting at 7:30. And at that action meeting is when a decision has to be made on how to proceed with these bids. So, does anybody else have any comment that they would like to make? No? Okay, then I guess we'll proceed. I don't know, Scott, are you going to go first or Steve? Okay.
Hope everyone's doing well. We appreciate the opportunity tonight to review some of the historical information regarding the air conditioning proposed project at the three elementary schools. Tonight, we're going to cover a number of items. We're really going to start from the beginning, give the board the entire background of the project. Mr. Kennedy's going to discuss the project scope. We'll talk about the timeline, because we've had two bids here. So, we'll talk about the timeline that was conducted and utilized for bid process number one and bid process number two. We'll talk about the cost estimates. We'll talk about the bid results for bid number one and bid number two. And then finally, we'll discuss the financial impact and how the school district would actually contemplate paying for the project. First off, the background. This all started really in September of 2016. A few parents came to a meeting. It was the Support Services and Finance Committee meeting on September 26, 2016. Right around that time, we were experiencing a number of days where we had hot days for September, very humid days, and actually continued a little bit into October as well. Air conditioning was not on our radar at all up to that point in time. It was not on our long-term capital improvement plan list. It was not discussed at any Support Services Committee meeting. It was not discussed at any Finance Committee meeting. So, on September 26, that was really the beginning of the discussion regarding the air conditioning projects. Some of the same parents came to the November 9, 2016, work session and expressed their concerns about not having air conditioning, in particular in the three elementary schools. Also on Sept- on, I'm sorry, on November 17, parents spoke at the regular board action meeting. And during that time, from September until November, the administration worked with our architects, Bonnet Associates, and we were working to develop cost estimates at that point in time, so we could inform our Support Services Committee and our Finance Committee about what we would be talking about exactly financially if the board would consider some of these options. The first estimates were presented to the Support Services Committee and Finance Committee on November 28. So, in a short two-month time, we went from not having air conditioning on our radar at all, no previous conversations, to delivering the first cost estimates to our Support Services and Finance Committee. There are six buildings in North Penn School District that do not have air conditioning in the classrooms. We have three elementary schools, Gwinnor, Oak Park, and Knapp, and also our three middle schools, Pendale, Pembroke, and Penfield. Our architects, with their preliminary cost estimate, presented six options to the Support Services and Finance Committee for all six buildings. It was later determined that the middle schools were cost prohibitive, and the focus was going to be on the elementary schools. So, tonight's discussion and presentation is really going to focus on the three elementary schools. The middle school projects, all three combined, were over $10 million, depending on the option that you consider. So, again, they were ruled out by the board at that point in time. Okay, I'll turn this over now to Mr. Kennedy to talk about the project scope.
Thank you. The intent of this project is to provide all occupied spaces with air conditioning. There's several pieces of equipment we'll use. Classrooms will receive what's called a through-wall univentilator, and I'll explain that in detail a little later. Open spaces will receive either rooftop thermal recovery units or rooftop packages. I'll also explain those in a few minutes. Additional spaces, technology closets, will receive split systems, and small interior spaces receive what's called a cassette unit. All of these pieces of equipment will provide heating, cooling, and fresh air to the spaces they serve. This is the floor plan for Gwinnor Elementary School. As you can see, the areas in blue are areas that are currently air-conditioned. Basically, at the left side are the modular classrooms. You have the multipurpose room in the center, and off to the right, you have the library, cafeteria. Anything in red is not currently air-conditioned. So, the base bid is to air-condition all of the general classroom spaces. In addition to the base bid, we're taking some alternate bids. First alternate bid at Gwinnor is to add air conditioning to our technology closets, call the technology equipment in those spaces. The second alternate is to add air conditioning to the central activity areas. It's the large spaces in the center between those classrooms, add air conditioning in those areas. And finally, the third alternate is to add, there's two interior classrooms that need air conditioning, they're very small rooms, we're going to add some air conditioning to that through an alternate bid. Moving on to Knapp, similar floor plan. The areas in blue, air-conditioned, again, multipurpose, cafeteria, library, main office, nurse, those areas. Areas in red are not air-conditioned. The alternates we planned for Knapp are, again, the server rooms, we'll get technology, we'll get the air conditioning. Same workrooms. There are workrooms between classrooms that are not air-conditioned, they're small, for just a couple of teachers to work. They'll receive cassette split systems. Again, there's one small interior classroom that have air conditioning. Knapp, the controls for Knapp are a combination of digital controls and pneumatics, very old, not very efficient, so we proposed a fourth alternate to provide digital controls in the entire building. So, we have all this new equipment, we can control it and schedule that equipment. Finally, we have Oak Park. Same floor plan with the red and blue areas. The alternates are very similar, the server rooms, the workrooms. The cafeteria at Oak Park currently has air conditioning, but that unit is failing. We've really band-aided, put that together, and are keeping it running right now, but we're recommending that be replaced as well. It's 20 years old, over 20 years old. That's one of the alternate bids. Here's a picture of a typical univentilator. It's really this unit in the middle right here, under the window, and on each side of that is bookcases and storage. This is the cross-section of the univentilator. So, the univentilator, the back of the unit is against the exterior wall. There's a piece of ductwork that runs to the back of the unit to bring in the fresh air. On the bottom are fans, so the air is drawn in through the unit, through a filtration system. In the center here is a heating coil, and behind it is a cooling coil. These are the hot pipes that come from our boiler room, feeding the hot water coil. On the left side will be a compressor that will cool the cooling coil. So, the unit draws fresh air, and again, through the filter, across the coil, depending on the season, the air is discharged out the top into the classroom. That's the typical univentilator works. This is a rooftop unit. You'll see on top of our, for our large spaces and common areas. Again, very similar function. Air is brought in through the filtration system, it goes through a heating or cooling coil. The difference here is the ductwork is down through the roof system and out, distributing to large areas or small classrooms that don't have an exterior wall. That's why you have to use this type of unit. But they basically function the same. This is a much larger unit for, again, for large areas, common areas, things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. So, I'd like to review the timeline that was utilized for what we're calling bid number one. This was the bid that was conducted earlier in the calendar year 2017. So, again, to rewind, on November 28, the Support Services Committee recommended proceeding with the univentilator option. Our architect presented six different options to the various committees and to the full board in terms of how to air-condition the building. So, the project that Mr. Kennedy outlined, the scope that he just outlined, is the option of the univentilator option. There were five other options, just for your information. Most of those were much more costly than the option that we're considering. The Finance Committee on November 28 recommended funding the project through the Capital Reserve Fund. At that point in time, the initial project budget was about $3.7 million. And then on December 5, the school board officially authorized the administration a contract with Bonnet for the three elementary schools. The project budget at that point in time moved to $4.584 million. And just for your information, what was also approved that night was the contract with the architect is a 6.5 percent fee, based on the total value of the bids. And also, for your information, we've paid $285,000 to date on this project. We went out for advertising of the bids on January 13, 16, and 23, as required by law. This is a public bid, so we're required to advertise in two newspapers for a three-week period. January 25, we conducted a pre-bid meeting. On February 2 was the original bid due date. However, at that point in time, it was pretty evident that there were very few electrical contractors that were interested in the project. So, we made a decision to push back the bid opening date one week to February 9. And during that period of time, we made additional contact with electrical contractors to try to solicit interest. Unfortunately, on February 9, we had some weather-related concerns, and we moved the bid opening to February 10, and the bids were open on February 10. I'm going to resume that timeline in a minute, but first, I'd like to cover the history of the cost estimates. Also, it's important to note that Mr. Kennedy pointed out that there are some alternates. So, I'm going to talk at points about the base bid. The base bid would not include any alternates, and then I will also discuss the alternates that Mr. Kennedy discussed. The first bar on the far left, these are dated. Dates might be a little difficult to read, depending on where you're sitting, but the first date is 11/20/2016. I mentioned earlier, that was the first estimate that was presented to our Support Services Committee and our Finance Committee. The estimate at that point in time was $3.7 million. On December 5, the night that the board authorized moving forward the project, the estimates rose to $4.584 million. On February 1, about a week before the bids were open, the base bids, this was with no alternates, the estimate rose to slightly over $5 million. Including the alternates that Mr. Kennedy just outlined, the estimate at that point in time was a little bit over $6 million. On September 19, the estimate increased with no alternates. This is the base bid, is $6.5 million. And finally, on that same day, September 19, including the alternates, the total bid amount, or the estimate at least, was a little bit over $8 million. So, let's talk now about the bid results for bid number one. Okay, first off, I mentioned earlier about we did advertise in the newspaper. That's our legally required minimum to do, advertise in a newspaper, a local newspaper, for a minimum of three weeks. We also posted the bid on our website. But in addition to that, and working with our architects, there were a number of contractors that were solicited, independent of the newspaper advertisement, in order to gain interest in the project. And I have those totals here. 14 general contractors were contacted, 10 HVAC, Heating, Ventilation, Air Conditioning contractors were contacted, 10 plumbing contractors, and nine electrical contractors. And Mr. Kennedy, if you could just comment a little bit about the plumbing, what piece, why are we talking about plumbing on this project?
At Knapp Elementary School, there were some plumbing issues we had to deal with. We actually awarded that project, it was around $78,000. Had to do with some exterior stormwater piping, some sanitary piping that was deteriorating, and some sump pump issues in the boiler room. So, the plumbing bids were just for Knapp, and that project was awarded and completed this summer.
So, that didn't necessarily have anything to do with the air conditioning, but the board did authorize that additional work for Knapp Elementary School. So, now moving on to the number of registered bidders we had for the first bid. These would be bidders that attended the pre-bid meeting that I mentioned earlier. We had three general contractors, five HVAC, two plumbing, and one electrical. So, fast forward now to February 10, when the bids were received, we had three bids submitted for general contractor, one for HVAC, two for plumbing, and no electrical bids. And keep in mind, this was bid as an entire package. We structured bid number two a little bit differently, but this package was one bid, encompassing all three elementary schools. So, let's take a look about, look at the bid results now. Now, these are just for the base bids, okay? These are base bids, these do not include any alternates at this point in time. But the general contractor, the February 1 estimate for the general contractor was $838,000. That bid came in a little bit over $1 million. HVAC estimate was $2.5 million, that came in a little bit over $4 million. So, that one was about $1.5 million over the February 1 estimate. Plumbing was pretty much right on target. The bid came in at $78,000, the estimate was $92,000, and the electrical estimate was $1 million. However, we received no bids. So, there's nothing to compare against for the electrical contractor. So, I'd like to go back now to the timeline again, to finish off the timeline for bid number one. We were concerned that we didn't receive any electrical bids, so at that point in time, the project couldn't move forward. We were discussing a number of options. Potentials included rejecting all the bids, re-advertising. We were concerned with the timeline at that point in time, because we were already into late February at that point. So, to reject the bids and re-advertise, go through another three-week advertising period, get the bids back, analyzing, have the contractor's order, the product, we didn't feel there was enough time to have the project completed by the end of the summer for the school to open on time. So, on March 16, 2017, our board rejected bids for the general and HVAC. There were no electrical bids, so nothing was rejected for electrical. The board did award the contract for Knapp Plumbing, and that project is now complete. Also, on March 16, the board did authorize new bids, so advertisement for new bids for the Oak Park Multipurpose Room Air Conditioning. We felt at that point in time, one singular project, a much smaller project, we felt that it would be possible to have that project completed in time for the start of school. And since that didn't deal with individual classrooms, the start of school really wouldn't be impacted if there would be a delay with that project. On April 4, 2017, our board approved a bid for the Oak Park Multipurpose Room Air Conditioning, and that total contract was $523,650. That does not include any architect fees or any change orders, that was the base bid award, $523,000. And that project is now totally complete, Mr. Kennedy, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so now, we had a situation where we had discussion after the bids were rejected, and we indicated that we would come back in the fall and conduct another bid process and try to have the air conditioning project completed for a summer of 2018. So, as we promised, we conducted another bid in the fall of 2017. We had the advertisement appear in the newspaper once again on October 9, 16, and 23. Pre-bid meeting was on October 25. Now, the structure I mentioned was a little bit different on this bid package number two. Instead of having the project bid as one complete package, Mr. Kennedy, along with the architects, made a recommendation that we actually structure the bid as three separate bids. That way, we don't have the potential of one contractor spreading himself too thin to try to get three separate buildings completed in one summer. So, this gives an opportunity for a contractor, let's say, that maybe was unsuccessful when the Gwinnor opening on November 1. They had an opportunity to sharpen their pencil and come back on November 6 and submit another proposal for Oak Park. And the same for the Knapp opening. So, we structured it three different openings, 11-1, 11-6, and 11-9. And that seemed to work pretty well, because we had a lot of interest, and we did receive bids this time from every, every prime contractor. So, on November 27, the bid results were reviewed with the Support Services Committee, as well as the Finance Committee. On December 4, at the board reorganization meeting, the board established two special meetings. Tonight, of course, is the first of those two meetings, work session number one, to discuss the air conditioning projects, and we will have work session number two at 6:30 on Thursday evening, December 14, in this very same room. So, let's discuss now the bid results for bid number two. First off, bidders notified directly. Again, I think it's important to note that we don't just simply put an ad in the paper. We go out and solicit interest in contractors, because it's in our best interest to get as much interest in the project as possible. The more bidders that are interested, it typically results in lower prices for the school district. So, five general contractors, six HVAC, and six electrical were contacted directly. We had five general contractors, nine HVAC, and five electrical at the pre-bid meeting. So, we consider them registered bidders at that point in time. And bids that were received, now, these encompass all three projects. We had nine general, 18 HVAC, and 15 electrical spread out over the three bids. So, that's a really good result, to go from zero electrical to 15 the second time around. We were quite pleased with that. Okay, so now, we're taking a look at a comparison between the base bids, once again, from the, this is now the September 19 estimate. This was the last estimate we received from our architect. These are on the base bids, broken out by building. These do not include any soft costs or architectural fees or any contingencies, these are strictly the base bid. So, in Gwinnor, the estimate was $2.167 million, the bids came back at $1.663 million. Very pleased with that. At Knapp, the estimate was $2.1 million, and the bids came back at $1.8 million, the low bid. Oak Park, the estimate was $1.391, and the final result was a little bit higher than the latest estimate of $1.5 million. So, again, using the 9-19 estimate, and that's really critical, because depending on which estimate you use, it will produce different results. There are really four different iterations of estimates. I'm using the last estimate here for this particular chart. So, taking a look at the base bids, on the September 19 estimate, for all three buildings, the total was $5,689,000, and the bids came in slightly over $5 million. If you include the alternates, and I believe the administrative recommendation would be to consider the alternates, that way you have a completely air-conditioned building. The 9-19 estimate was almost $7 million. Again, this is basically construction costs, these do not include any soft costs, and the bids came in about $6.2 million. So, this is the same slide I showed earlier, taking you through the history of the estimates, starting on November 20, 2016. The only thing different now is we're showing in the far right-hand column, the bid results with the alternates. So, again, I mentioned it's really important that, depending on your perspective, that yields a different result. If you say, "Well, I believe in the November 20, 2016 estimate, that estimate was $3.7 million, and now the bid results, including the soft costs, are $7 million." So, from that perspective, you say, "Wow, that's a heck of a lot more than what I thought we were going to have to pay." Or, if you look at the December 5 estimate of $4.5 million, and the bid results of nearly $7 million, once again, you reach that same conclusion, "Wow, that's a lot more than I thought we were going to have to pay." If you look at the September 19 estimate, the very last estimate that was presented before the second round of bids were open, that all-in estimate, including the soft costs, was over $8 million, and we have bid results with the alternate of roughly $7 million. Now, that $7 million figure, I do want to point out, that does not include the money that was spent on Oak Park. So, the money that was spent on Oak Park was about $523,000 for the project that was completed this summer. So, if you include Oak Park in that total, which is probably fair to do, you're at roughly $7.5 million to do all three buildings with the alternates, $7.5 million. Okay, so now, what happens from here? What would be the remaining timeline? What needs to be done? What happens with the bids? Well, the bids are valid for a 60-day period. That was written into the specification. So, the bids were open in early November, so that means that absent a special meeting by the school board, the board would need to take some action on the bids on the December 14 action meeting, which is this Thursday night. Otherwise, the bids will expire, unless a special meeting is called to comply with the 60-day piece of it. So, if the bids are approved, on December 14, the architect would issue a notice to proceed to the contractors on December 18. Shop drawings would be due to the architect on January 19, 2018. The deadline for the equipment would be May 18 of 2018. Construction would start in June. Substantial completion would be in August, and final completion would be in September Okay, now, let's talk about the financial impact and where the money could possibly come from for this project. Right now, North Penn School District has roughly $13 million in cash between a number of what we call Construction Fund and Capital Reserve Fund. Construction Fund money consists of bond issues that were floated to finance renovation projects. For example, at Hatfield, bond issues were floated for Hatfield to fund those renovation projects, but at the end of the project, it looks like we're going to be left with maybe $700,000 in unspent funds that could be used for other capital projects. So, we include all construction fund proceeds from the bond issues and our Capital Reserve Fund. Our Capital Reserve Fund is a special fund, separate from the general fund, that is basically utilized for one of two things, per the school code. You're allowed to purchase school buses out of the Capital Reserve Fund, or you're allowed to make capital improvements on your buildings out of the Capital Reserve Fund. So, school buses, maybe that doesn't quite make sense, but capital improvements, that certainly makes sense to come from the Capital Reserve Fund. Typically, the way the Capital Reserve Fund has been funded here in North Penn School District is through a transfer of money from the general fund, which is funded by, largely by tax revenue, transfer from the general fund to the Capital Reserve Fund. That's typically how the money has flowed to the Capital Reserve Fund. So, we have bond-issue money that comes from issuing bonds for renovation projects, and we have Capital Reserve Fund that comes from a transfer to the general, from the general fund. And that transfer typically occurs at the end of the fiscal year. So, for example, if our expenditure budget is $250 million, and it looks like we're only going to spend $249 million, the board in the past has said, "Well, maybe let's transfer $1 million over to the Capital Reserve Fund to use that to support any kind of capital improvements that we might make in that building for the school district." And some examples of capital improvements we made include asbestos removal, roof repairs, secured entrances, vesuvial entrances. Over the last couple of years, we've done that. So, those are some, a few small examples. Camera upgrades throughout the school district, that's another example of money that's been spent from the Capital Reserve Fund. Okay, so, how does a project get in the pipeline for Capital Reserve money or renovation project? Well, the board approves these projects. It typically starts at the Support Services Committee, and then the Finance Committee typically reviews the cost estimates and gives its blessing on it. Then the full board ultimately would need to authorize the project, typically through a bid for the project, a public bid, since we do have that requirement. So, if we take a look at the projects in the pipeline, they total almost $9 million. So, that means that we have about $4 million between Capital Reserve money and Construction Fund money that's completely unallocated at this point in time. Okay, about $4 million. And that includes, we just recently transferred $1.7 million into the Capital Reserve Fund from the 2016-17 budget. That $4 million total includes that transfer. Okay?
Before we move on, Steve, you wanted to summarize, maybe you're doing it in this slide, of that $8 million, what are the kinds of things that are in the pipeline?
Some of the projects I just mentioned are in the pipeline. So, we have the closeout of Hatfield, we have the Montgomery project that'll be closed out. We have final payments on roofing projects. We have reserves still held for asbestos removal. We have the camera upgrades at our elementary schools. So, those would be some small examples. We do share a report with our Finance Committee every month, updating the balance. We have a dust collector upgrade at Pembroke. We have some remaining funds for our athletic field master plan, surveillance camera, asphalt and concrete repair, and some money that's still being held for the Inglewood renovation project that's still being held by the
project that's still being held by the bonding company. So, those basically represent the remaining funds. The largest piece of that would be the Montgomery renovations that's still in the pipeline, due to be paid. So, that leaves remaining balance of 4 million. So, to relate that now to this project, the budget that was approved by the board last December, December 2016, was roughly 4.5 million. So, that means the additional funds, if the board would move forward with all three projects with the alternates, the additional funds that would be needed for the elementary projects, including the work that was done over the summer at Oak Park, would be roughly 2.9 million. So, if the board would move forward, we have funds available in the capital reserve fund and construction fund. That would leave a remaining balance of slightly over 1 million. Now, there have been two projects that have been discussed by the board that we have not assigned any cost estimates to, but they do appear on our capital reserve report that we provide to the finance committee on a monthly basis. So, we have two pieces of the report. Projects that are already committed and funded, and that's the 8.9 million that I mentioned, that's still in the pipeline. And then, we have other projects that have been discussed at support services and finance committee, but they have not yet been funded. Those projects have not been moved forward, but we keep them on the list just as a reminder that they've been discussed before. Those two projects would be the building, potential building upgrades at NAP that was discussed as part of the air conditioning projects, that there might be a need for additional building upgrades, and also field upgrades that was part of the athletic field master plan. Those two appear in our report. The budget is listed as to be determined. The project timeline is listed as to be determined as well. But again, those two projects are on our horizon, they're on our radar, and if the air conditioning moves forward, we would have a balance remaining of a little bit over 1 million for any future remaining capital projects. I think at this point, we'd like to ask for the board's question and input and hear from the community. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Skokic and Mr. Kennedy. Does anybody want to start with questioning?
I have a question.
Okay.
Mrs. Steve, we know, and we've known for years, that the high school has some issues. Are they in the queue anywhere?
They are not at the present time.
They should be.
Steve, is there any benefit, since NAP possibly needs some change, some upgrades, to rolling that into the NAP renovations, rolling air conditioning into that? What would that look like for us? Do you have a sense of that?
I'm going to ask Mr. Kennedy to answer that.
Sure.
I think the air conditioning could be a standalone project now or rolled into renovation. By the one issue, if we delay it, the renovations are really a year or two away. That's probably the biggest issue that I see. If we put the air conditioning now, we could build renovations around it and not waste any of that money by doing the air conditioning now. Could both options.
Yeah, and just to clarify on that, one significant thing I think the board needs to consider is certainly, Ms. Ott, that isn't an option. You could do that. If we do proceed with the air conditioning bids that we've received, now you saw earlier, the solution was the unit ventilator. Those then would be installed at NAP and would remain if we did a renovation sometime thereafter. We don't anticipate tearing those out and throwing them away and doing it differently. If we don't proceed with the bid at the NAP Elementary School, but we do decide to do a full-blown renovation and an upgrade to various things over at NAP, the options are available then to do a number of different solutions. The two-pipe system, the four-pipe system, the ventilator system, those are all pretty much still on the table if you go and do a full-blown renovation. But we had examined the four-pipe, we had examined the two-pipe, we examined the unit ventilator, and absent a full-blown renovation, the unit ventilator seemed to be the preferred choice. But that said, of those that we've done in terms of recent renovations, we have done those either as two-pipe or four-pipe, where there's a chiller down the corner of the, you know, the outside of the building somewhere down the corner. Pipes run with the water that's chilled and runs into the building and runs through ventilators, you know, that sort of thing. With the unit ventilator solution that this bid is based on, each one has its own little compressor in the one corner, as you saw in that one diagram. So, that's probably the most significant difference if you did decide to not award the NAP air conditioning bid as presently been, decided to go to a full-blown renovation in that building. It would be then a decision point whether we're going to do it as a four-pipe, a two-pipe, or back to the unit ventilator solution.
Kind of expanding on that question, when you look at Gwinnor, Oak Park and NAP, do we have internally a sense as to which, what our needs are in each of those buildings currently? Is that something that at one or two or three of those schools will be part of the study that we're doing with Architectural Services, with the RFP that's going to be coming up? How will we be, how are we assessing the needs comprehensively in the three buildings to make sure we're not just doing one, one small project when the building may be in need of more comprehensive repair?
First of all, I think we need to do the study of all three buildings. Gwinnor and Oak Park are in much better condition than NAP in terms of general renovations. I think they were renovated within the last 15, 10, 15 years. NAP, besides the HVC systems, the windows are single-pane windows. The electrical and plumbing and mechanical systems are old, data as well. So, NAP really is, really needs more of a renovation than the other two schools, but we need to study that a little further, to get all the details. But generally, it's, you could see the tour we had the other day, all the systems are much older at NAP.
Steve, could you provide some perspective based on your observations? So, with that, just over a million dollars left in the fund balance, historically for North Penn, how has that trended?
The million dollars would be a low figure. We typically are somewhere closer to the range of maybe 3 to 5 million in the capital reserve fund or bond fund. So, that 1 million would be pretty low, especially when you consider some of those other projects that I mentioned, the athletic field study that we'll be addressing early in 2018 and the possibility of maybe some additional upgrades in NAP. So, 1 million for those two other projects really would not go very far.
Thank you.
So, the next question, and of course, as Mrs. Parkowski had mentioned, the high school and the needs that we have at the high school. And I think Mr. D'Azio had mentioned about the RFP. Based on the board's direction that we got at the last meeting we were here for in early December, we are putting together a request for proposals for architects to take a look at what our needs are. And I anticipate we would establish and name some schools and ask them to do a review of those schools as a part of a feasibility study. Certainly, the high school is one that has significant needs and we will expect to include that in this RFP. And then, certainly, NAP Elementary is another one that is on our radar in terms of due for some significant work over there. Once we get the results of that feasibility study, we have a lot better direction because those are experts in the field, giving us an idea of what the needs are in those buildings. And then, we would, of course, if it was decided to do larger-scale renovations, we would have to do a borrowing. We would have to put out bonds and do a borrowing. And then, the next question after that is, well, where does that fit into the long-term financial planning? When is our debt trailing off? The existing debt? Is there room to add more debt without increasing significantly? The need then for the general fund to fund the interest payments on that debt? That's all part of a larger discussion.
And Dr. Dietrich, thank you for that explanation, also, Mr. Kennedy. Is there, is part of this review that will be done of facilities included in that as our cost-benefit analysis, I've seen it more recently, of savings that'll be provided, long-term savings and return on investment when it comes down to green savings, energy efficiency?
Yes.
Yeah, one of the significant things, for example, that Mr. Kennedy referenced in a building like a NAP Elementary is a single-pane window. Well, those are not energy efficient. I mean, if you go over next to the windows, you can feel how cold they are next to the windows. So, when we do renovations, we upgrade those windows to something that's much more energy efficient. That's just one example.
So, for NAP Elementary, if you renovated that, when we did Montgomery, did we do the ventilator units or did you do the two-pipe or four-pipe?
There are ventilator, unit ventilator systems. There's a small chiller there as well. Four-pipe?
Yeah, it's four-pipe.
Four-pipe.
Chiller heating.
So, if we did do a, you know, a full renovation of NAP, would you, you know, and we waited, would you recommend putting the ventilator system in then or would you recommend putting in the?
I'd recommend putting it as a two-pipe or four-pipe system.
Okay. I would assume they're more efficient.
It's more efficient, then you have to deal with one chiller, whereas right now, we have to deal with a piece of equipment in every classroom. So, you know, eight, 10 years down the road, you've got potential more pieces of equipment that could fail or you have to work on. So, one chiller, which is a piping system throughout the building, two or four-pipe is more efficient and less maintenance down the road.
And what is the deciding factor between going, between two or four-pipe? Is it what's, what you can build in there or is it just strictly a cost factor?
It's the convenience. If the two-pipe system means your entire loop in your building is hot water or cold water, depending on the season. So, in October, going, coming out of the cooling season, you, once you switch to heating season, you can't go back.
Okay.
So, you have to delay that as long as you can. If you have a hot day in November, you can't turn the air conditioning back on. It's just, once you switch over, it takes two or three days to switch over. By that time, that heat wave is gone. So, it's really convenient that that, being able to switch back and forth.
And what did you say you put in Montgomery for?
Four-pipe.
So, what I'm hearing is that we're all, we seem to be on the same page that the next two projects that we would have to take a look at are the high school and NAP. So, it sounds to me also clear that we would not be doing extensive work at Gwinnor or Oak Park in the near future. So, we have to decide as a board whether we're going to move forward with, and we don't have to decide that tonight, but we have to begin thinking about whether we're looking at NAP comprehensively in terms of a large-scale project or whether we're just going to proceed with an air conditioning project. So, we have the benefit of having community members here and perhaps will have comment on that, but I think that's what I'm hearing, kind of reading between the lines, between what everyone's saying. And I think that's probably where we are in terms of a decision point at this point in time.
Well, am I understanding correctly that Gwinnor and Oak Park don't really need anything else besides the air conditioning? Is that correct? They were recently renovated within the last decade?
They were, excuse me, they were, but the boiler at Gwinnor is older, so we have to keep our eye on that, but not a whole-scale renovation. There are some components that may need to be addressed in the next few years, but not a renovation.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Should we take public comment?
I think it's probably a good idea.
Okay. Would anybody in the public like to get up and make a comment, please?
And I see that, I believe all three of our elementary principals are here. If there's comments from what you're seeing in your buildings, please feel free to come up and we're certainly interested in what it looks like day-to-day and the challenges that you're facing. So, please feel free to do that. No obligation.
I have two questions and then a statement I'd like to read. The 285,000 that was paid for the AC project that we referred to earlier, what was that for and who was it paid to and did it include the 78,000 in plumbing contracts?
Are you referring to the Oak Park Elementary School, multipurpose room?
Yes. You said that it was 285,000 paid for the AC project so far. That's all it said.
No, the 285, that was the amount that was paid to the architect so far in this project.
I think his question was, did that cover any work that was also incorporated in with the plumbing work that was done? Is that your question? You mentioned the plumbing.
What did that include, the 285,000?
That was the architectural fee for the design work for the air conditioning project. And the plumbing was included, the value of that was included.
The value of the plumbing was included.
That's what's been paid so far.
Okay. And the 285,000, that was not, that payment didn't include, that was all for the work that has not started yet or the projects that weren't completed?
Correct. That was for the design of the project.
I think what would be helpful to your point is to explain the way the contract went.
I read the contract.
So, it's in phases, is my understanding, right?
It is, it is. There are four separate phases and the billing is broke out by a percentage. So, for example, 35% of the contract is for design development, that's been completed. 40% of the contract is for construction document phase, that's been completed. 2% is for the bidding phase, that's been completed. And 23% of the value of the contract is for the construction phase.
So, we paid out about 77% of that Bonnet's contract?
No, we've paid what was invoiced, we've paid what was invoiced. I can tell you that 76...
The construction phase, you said, I'm sorry, was 23%?
23%, correct.
And that's the only part that's not been completed so far of Bonnet's contract, correct?
Has not been completed, correct.
So, we paid, the 285,000 was probably about 76% of their total contract?
No, we haven't been invoiced for the 76% portion. We've only been invoiced a portion of that 76%.
And that's the 200, do we know what percent that 285,000 is?
Not offhand, no. I think the total value, again, depends on how the bids are awarded, but I think it was in the high 300s, I think would be the total value based on one of the estimates.
It's considerably the large majority of their contract, though. What'd you say?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay. Did we get proposals from other architects?
No.
Only Bonnet for this project?
Yes.
Okay. Why not?
I can't answer that question. That was a board directive at that point in time to contract with Bonnet. We, the district has had a long history in working with Bonnet and the board elected not to conduct an RFP for this particular project. Time was of the essence. Bonnet is familiar with the school district, familiar with the buildings, and in order to get the project moving and designed, working with Bonnet was certainly the most expeditious way to proceed.
However, we're a year later and here we are. I sent an email to all the board members yesterday with some information on owner's representatives. I believe you got that. I have spoken with many members of the community and we would like to see the school board hire an independent owner's rep with no conflicts of interest to work in conjunction with the school board on the air conditioning and future construction projects. This company would not be paid on a percentage fee like an architect or other companies. The owner's representative manages the construction process on the school board and taxpayers' behalf. They represent taxpayers' interests through the complete process, including the RFP, architect and engineer selection, design development, schedule, order of magnitude budget, value engineering, bidding, bid reviews, contract awards, scheduling, construction coordination, RFI, change order process. I've reviewed a lot of the contracts. I've been in this industry, in this level, for 20 years. My father has 40 years of experience. We reviewed the AC project and it is flawed, to say the least. The project's not completed. A massive amount of time and money has been spent so far. And it appears we don't really have a direction, to be honest. It also appears by looking at some of the other contracts and reviewing it, we got about hundreds of thousands of dollars more we spent that we shouldn't have on projects that we've reviewed. An owner's rep would have prevented this from happening. The McGee Company is the company that I emailed. It was information that I got. It was readily available. They were very willing to send that over to me. And organization like this, type of organization, we would like to see the school board hired to protect the school district and the taxpayers to prevent future project failures and facilitate cost savings and transparency through the entire construction process. Just like, we would like you to take that into consideration and under review before we go any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
And Mike, just to, just to comment on a few of those comments, I certainly appreciate many of the comments that you made. I think I've been very clear on the record that I think the amount of money we have spent on our... think the amount of money we have spent on architectural services is outrageous, I think is the term that I've used. The value we get for our dollar is lacking at best, and the transparency is not where it should be. This board has committed to a different approach. We've authorized an RFP at the first meeting of the new board, and will be issuing an RFP sometime within the next month or two. And the, the places where the prior board has come up short, those errors will not be committed again, and we will correct that moving forward.
Yeah, and I understand that, and the new board members, congratulations and welcome. And we appreciate your commitment to that. And the RFPs, from what I understand so far, have been to other architects, which is great. And I would, understanding that there may be an RFP, that there probably should be an RFP process and considerations to, at least looking at an owner's representative for you. They would act as a project manager, and they can negotiate. RFIs are where a lot of overruns and cost comp, they started RFIs that turn into requests for information that turn into change orders that could be negotiated or through value engineering, where if you have an owner's representative who's not getting paid percentage basis, can negotiate that for the school district and taxpayers and the school board and stuff. Whereas an architect firm most likely strictly just gets paid percentage on top of all of the change orders.
And if I might add, thank you for the information that you shared. In my career experience, actually, I ran a firm that did similar work. And at times, we would have cost savings, significantly larger scale spend. But I could think it's in higher education where we would save up to a million dollars as that representative for an institution. So at least I, as one member, can vouch for the concept, and it's something that I believe we should explore further.
Yeah, I mean, it looks like you had about 10 million last year off-lay. If you saved 1%, that's $100,000. And if it cost you $60,000 to save that, it would have facilitated at least the smooth operation of the projects and completion. And transparency is probably one of the biggest things as well.
You don't have to convince me of the concept, that's for sure.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Board. My name's Alina Pavleani-T, Windsor Circle, North Wales. Forgive me, first of all, I'm a little scatterbrained, family issues this week and whatnot. First of all, congratulations. I am so excited to see a new board, new face, new vision for North Penn that is willing to listen to us, to hear us, and to take our opinions and considerations into fact, greatly appreciated more than you guys will ever know. I guess my first question is, we've used Bonnet these entire time. Why the huge difference in cost? If we've used them for the first estimates, we use them for this estimates. What's changed in less than a year that there is such a huge significance in their costs?
I think maybe Mr. Kennedy or Mr. Skrocky could offer some, you know, additional input in this. I know there were some changes in the scope of the project, where we initially had some thoughts on what the extent of the project would be. And then there were also revisions done by the architect's office in terms of what they believed the prices were going to be based, I think partly off of what the bids, although we didn't have an electrical bid, they did have the benefit of seeing some of the other bids on the first bid go around. So they made some adjustments based off of those.
When we are looking at the three elementary schools, are we looking at the two-pipe system, or are we looking at the four-pipe system that will lead us to longer years and more beneficial for our money?
Actually, neither of those systems. It's a, each unit in the classroom is a heating and cooling system in itself. It's a self-contained unit.
Okay.
And the large spaces have those rooftop units of cooling and heating to those spaces.
Okay, so I guess in conjunction with that, my question is, my son goes to Gwynnor on the reason this whole project got started because of his medical needs. You placed last year three portable AC units in his three classes that he's in that, for lack of better terms, are useless. You spent thousands of dollars that, again, could be put towards this. They're useless. They do nothing in that classroom. Might have taken temperatures on a daily basis that teachers have also. Those classes are sometimes hotter, and I have pictures, hotter than the classrooms without the AC, on top of all of the noise from those AC units that we have now wasted all of that money. So again, I know this is a new board and new vision. I know I don't need to say this, but I'm going to. Let's do this smart. Let's do this effectively. Let's not do this as a Band-Aid on top of a Band-Aid, where we need to revisit this again in a couple of years, where we're spending more and more money. Let's do this effectively. Let's do this safely and healthy for our children and for our staff and our teachers. That's what we need to do. And one thing, I'm sorry, I started this whole thing, I want to make sure that we're not leaving out the middle schools. I know that they said we're focusing on the elementary schools. I know we're not focusing on the middle school at this point in time. I do want to make sure that they don't get left out. My son's going to be there in two years. We're going to have this whole thing, and I want to make sure that this, again, this is a safety and wellbeing. It's not a one-person thing. It's the entire staff, children, and facility.
Mr. Kennedy, are the units that were put in at Gwynnor in that particular classroom, these units?
No. No, they were portable units for, to temper the situation. We knew we couldn't cool the rooms completely. You would need at least two units in there, and the noise would be too much. We just tried to calm that situation with the temperature in those rooms. On 80-degree days at work, when it's in the 90s, they struggled to keep up. We have saved those units. We own them. And we've used them in certain areas when we have needs, when air conditioning units fail. So we put those to use at times. And we own them, like I said.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Christine Haley Brennan from 802 Yorktown Street. And hi, Dr. Dietrich. Hi, everybody. Congratulations, and glad to see everybody. We're in December. I can't believe it. So this is really informative. Thank you for having this. We're at Knapp Elementary, and I'm loving seeing parents and principal as well, principals here. I, so I just have some questions, if anybody has this. But this is news to me that, well, I guess it's news from me hearing it from you, that Knapp needs so much renovation. But as you said it, I'm like, yeah, yeah, it does. Yes. Yes, it does. It's just one of those buildings, when you're in it, you, you see it. Then you feel it, and smell it, and hear it, and trip on it, or slip on it. There's just a lot going on there. So I think, you know, we really want air conditioning, obviously. This is, you know, 10 schools have it and three don't. It starts to feel a little awkward. Why don't we have it? But I'm concerned that it does need so much renovation. So I don't want to just say, well, get the air conditioning done and just do it, because I was thinking of my house. If, because I have a few windows that need to be replaced, you know, putting in an air conditioner and the windows are not energy-proof. Why? This building looks like it seriously needs some improvements. So I was wondering, because I did hear you say some, I did hear the windows. Is there anybody who could elaborate a little bit? Have we assessed some of those needs? Are we also talking about maybe building? It almost sounded like, I don't know, it just seemed like major renovations. And I just wonder if anybody could give me an idea of that, please. Thank you.
I guess if the board gives direction, you know, we would study that with an architect, study what the needs are, and put the design together, develop some cost estimates, and then possibly go out and bid on those projects. That takes some time to do that, but that's the direction we would get from the board. We would do that.
Okay. So we're in assessment, really, still with this building? Are there actual people coming to see it? I'm so, now, this is where I'm at. I'm like, well, who's, how are we assessing? Are people actually, do we have contractors coming in to see this building? Or are there people that have said, you know, this needs to be fixed? I just, where are we with that part?
Mrs. Ott and Mr. Kennedy and I, and Mrs. Holman, we took a tour on Friday.
Oh, hey!
Yeah, so, and I am not a construction expert, but I can see that it needs some work. So, yeah, that's-
So was that kind of the first piece? All right, we're going to see, and maybe we need to start discussing having people come in, and the experts in structure or plumbing, well, I know we did plumbing, but those pieces, okay.
Right. And a piece of that is what we talked about earlier with the RFP, the request for proposals, where as a part of that process, we would identify Knapp as one of the schools that we want each of the responding architects to be able to tell us what they believe, and in terms of a feasibility study would be appropriate in that building. So it's a, it's a high-level overview, but it's very informative.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm sorry, before you, before you walk away, I actually had a little bit of a follow-up, especially for the woman that was just on. What we're talking about right now, I think, is actually one of the key issues on the struggle that we, as a new board, are actually, I think, trying to wrestle with a little bit. We know that we have to balance speed and addressing issues that are current and troubling people right now, but we don't want to just slap Band-Aids on, and we want to spend some time. So the conversation around Knapp is the poster child for that. You know, we can just put AC in and then build around it, or does it make sense to wait? This is something that I actually think that I would want to hear the most from some of the parents or the principals, is to understand the capacity to wait or not wait. Why, why are we trying to figure things out? We're already a year behind, and we don't want to, we want to take action, but we want to take the correct action. So we're trying to really balance that, that understanding between the two.
That's what I'm appreciating about this, because I think, you know, we, we have to have this discussion. And it really seems like we need somebody assessing the building to decide what, what Knapp really needs. We do need air conditioning 100%. Temperatures would be, in some rooms where, where doors are burning, literally, kids can't touch the doors because it's so hot. The doors need to be replaced, I mean, I'm assuming. And the windows as well. So if they're really, really cold, they're also really, really hot, because they're just not the kind of windows that you and I would want in our own homes. So I think that that's where, listen, I want air conditioning yesterday. But if this building needs a lot more, and this building was built in, when it was built, and it has not had the love and care over the years that maybe other buildings have had, and it's, it's about time. I mean, from today, there was another toilet. I know it happened, because my, you know, the kids love talking about toilets overflowing. And there's mold, and there's things, and there's, you know, over and over again. When I went to college to study education, we read books about schools that were like that, dripping and, and things falling apart. And, you know, it's just time to give, give a couple of our elementary schools some love. But I do appreciate that now we're looking at it as a whole, and not just slapping something up that's not going to be beneficial in the long run. But it seems like Knapp has quite a red flag up right now, not just, hey, we want air conditioning. And that's concerning me, that, that this may need to be up front. So I do appreciate that information, and we will, we will try to be engaged as well. So, thank you.
We would appreciate that. Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
So I have two, two follow-up points to that. I think if, in fact, we're going to proceed with possibly looking at Knapp in a more broad way, perhaps the board tonight can, and I would support, sort of directing the administration, as they craft this RFP for Architect Services, to make sure that a comprehensive look at Knapp is included in that proposal. So I don't know that we've gotten into specifics yet of what we're looking for in that RFP. But if we're not going to be moving forward with Knapp, I think we absolutely need to have whoever's going to be coming in providing that feasibility study, take a deep look at Knapp, go through the building, look at the plans, and give us a sense as to what we'd be looking at in total. Number two, I do think that if there's going to be a gap between now and whenever we're able to move forward with that larger project, we need to come up with some sort of plan for what we're going to do in that building. We've talked about a heat protocol in the past. We've talked about talking with our staff. We've talked about talking with home and school associations. I think some of those conversations have happened, but we really need to pull that together and formalize that. I see, or I saw Mr. Heibner in the back. I believe he has studied the issue a little bit, and perhaps has some insight that he could offer at a later time. But we really need to look at what we would be doing in those buildings, not just at Knapp, but also at our middle schools, to make sure that we don't have kids all day in 90 to 100-degree heat. So those are my kind of two points to follow up on, on that piece of public comment. And hopefully, you know, we can progress towards them.
Is there a current heat protocol in place?
Well, we met with representatives of the faculty and then the principal in each of those three buildings. We had a reference there made to something that Mr. Heibner had provided in his role with the MPEA and doing some work to help us with that. And we used that as a starting point. We had discussions about that. I also contacted the home and school presidents of each of the buildings and had discussions with them in terms of a heat protocol. So we had those meetings last spring to talk about, you know, what to do in the event of heat. We can certainly continue to refine that, but we had those discussions initially, at least back in spring.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? No? Any other questions or comments from the board? All right, then, we're, as another reminder, we're going to have another work session on six, at 6:30 on Thursday. And if anybody thinks of any questions they want to ask us in the meantime, please give us a call or email us, and we'll be happy to get back to you. So, thank you for coming out tonight. We really appreciate your input. Do I need a motion to adjourn for a work session? No? Okay, well, I'm doing that anyway.